And we'll call meeting to order at seven thirty AM. Regular school board meeting Friday, September twentieth. Seven thirty AM, Hope School District, almost down the same stretch. Glad to meet you, this is Susan White of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Information that'll prove of agenda. You have a motion to approve the agendas. By your most general second. Cross the seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
We shall passes. Um, welcoming our visitors, we have, this is Robert's joining us via Zoom. Yeah, Dave.
Hey, Sarah.
Just Dave.
It's Dave.
I'm waiting for you. All right, well, we're on to the student outcomes, schools and garden reels.
Great. So we made it, uh, we've had our first, um, testing event in last spring and I've been updating you on that, but we got our final reports and that'll, that's all available out on in North Dakota Insights. So, um, if you want to go out and check it out, I'll, you can even dig deeper into all of our data. There's a ton of stuff out there and it breaks down and you can look at that, but so, uh, we're gonna just focus, I'm gonna, we're gonna mend the progress monitoring calendar in a couple months or next month, but we're gonna just focus on, uh, goal one and two, which, um, goal one is ELA. Um, and our benchmark for this year was fifty-five percent. And we're gonna focus on goal two, which is math. And our benchmark for the year was fifty-five percent also, so. All of this is, you know, was in your packets and Craig, I, do you mind? Come on. Do I just pull up this, so the people that are?
Which one?
Do you want to do goal one?
Goal one, historical.
Uh, no, do you want to just pull up the report? I'm sorry, I should have.
ELA or then?
Uh, ELA.
Okay.
And then maybe I'll have to pull up the historical next, so. Um, so like I wrote on my request that, uh, our late, uh, on ELA that the progress monitoring from this winter, we expected about forty-five, oh, shoot, wrong one, right? It's, it's the report.
Uh, the top one.
Yeah, is that the ELA one? Yeah, okay, so we thought about forty-five percent of our students was score proficient on our, um, STAR test. But actually, uh, we're pleasantly surprised and, uh, we were fifty-four percent attainment and historically, ELAs kind of been our one where we've been focusing, you know, our efforts on improvement and, um, so it was really good to get this back that, that we, I mean, we were so close, uh, that, that target was fifty-five percent, but we were at fifty-four percent. So I feel actually good about that, I mean, that we, I feel like that we made that, um, you know, you can see the individual grades. Um, yeah, and so what I did was I dug into it. Um, maybe Greg, do you want to just go to the NDSA scores? Um, on that, yeah, thanks. So here was the distribution, um, this is an interesting graph that we get every year and you can see, so red, if you look up at under performance distribution, red is the kids that were novice. And yellow is the kids who are partially proficient. Green is proficient and blue is advanced. So you can see the data on, on those. I, I, I would like to say there's some trend data, uh, there and there, there is our grade, seventh and eighth grade. Um, we tend to drop in in the tenth grade, uh, we're still struggling with that and uh, uh, some of the things that I had in our reflection is that, you know, I mean, last year we hypothesized both in math and reading that, uh, it was motivation. So we started to deal with that, right? We, um, built in some incentives. We need to go back and start looking at, or re-looking at that again, but uh, let's just talk about plans for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, the CKLA that they did in grades three through six, that Greg and the team, they wrote that, Greg wrote that grant for that ten, was it ten thousand dollar? Fifty, I don't think, it was a big one. So it paid for our CKLA programming, um. They've been spending a lot of time working on that, they've even done some implementation with companies, so great recommend for professional learning. And that, they came in this summer to do that, right, Greg? To work on that, so, well, our, our goal was to continue implementation of science of reading, which our teachers have all received some level of training on and, um, ensure alignment with grades K through two. Again, providing more professional learning for it, uh, we focused on Renaissance, Greg and his team, Renaissance presented on one of our late start this last week. They came in to look at data, making sure that we're using that data to do programming and using, um, Freckle, which we purchased from Renaissance, both in math and ELA. It provides intervention based on their scores from STAR, so it's looking at the data and using that. We're gonna be spending time, um, looking at data after, they're in the middle of STAR testing right now, so, uh, two weeks, I don't remember what our schedule is for the calendar.
We're done next.
So we'll be looking at that data and, um, you know, starting to move forward, using it as the formative piece for us as we move forward, we'll also be doing the A plus. And, um, the A plus is the one, if you remember, that leads up to the NDSA, so it focuses in on those standards, looking at the, the standards that will be on the NDSA. We spent a full day with, um, Marzano and a principal from out in Bismarck, Shelley Swanson is her name, they, uh, she's a Marzano trainer. And she spent a day with us and we worked on proficiency scales and talked about data, like, they, their school's been through this, so they're, you know, a, a couple steps ahead of us as far as, um, using their proficiency scales and their data and so they, they saw the same things we had, like they have discrepancies of like, why does STAR say this or they use math? And why do their grades in their class say this? And then why does NDSA so that, you know, looking at why are these not lining up? Because if you're telling the parents one thing that you're reporting in your class and then the NDSA is different than what those other things are, you know, where's that, what's happening and why is it not aligning? So that's one of the goals is using our late starts for that, but focusing on those proficiency scales and making sure that those proficiency scales are on the standards that are our priority standards. So we've spent time in our late starts, looking at our priority standards that we have and figuring out what changes do we need to make in those priority standards? Which, that's not a really easy thing to do as an educator because, you know, we have things that we think are important. And that might not be what is important, considered important by, um, other professionals, but the standards that were given from the state have been worked on by teachers from across the state. They have proficiency scales, they have those standards and we need to start aligning with those, so we're doing work on that. Um, also, if you remember right on the superintendent, our girls wanted, uh, progress measures. That teachers are supposed to, we're moving towards learner-centered assessments and then those are built off those proficiency scales. So as we're looking at our proficiency scales, we're building our assessments off of that and we need to get to that piece. Jordan and myself and a team of teachers were just out, um, in Bismarck yesterday. And we're starting some work with a company called Two Revolutions and it's, um, Northern Cass and several other schools across the state that we're doing our PCBL and taking it up one more notch and this has to do with learner-centered instruction, learner-centered assessment. So we've got our proficiency skills, we've got our standards, now we're gonna go to the next step to make sure that we're doing this focused on the kids, so. Uh, some of these things I've kind of already covered, we're gonna continue to use, uh, claims, reasoning and evidence. The writing frame that we started last year that we spent PL time working on that, uh, the principals will be, um, going through and watching in the classrooms to make sure and doing an evaluation on our teachers, you know, using that, because that's one of the things that we require, so. Social studies, science, um, art, those classes, they are using the CRE, um, writing frame for that. So those are, um, some of our plans for twenty-four, twenty-five, do you want to maybe pull up the historical grade? And then, um, we can just look at the ELA historical, because just wanted to pull this up. Uh, you know, we talk a lot about COVID, right? And what happened in COVID, um, our historical for ELA? Um, I don't see the effect on it, which is surprising, I thought, I mean, we still have an impact, but in math, you really see the effect of COVID. So in twenty-twenty, you can see what grade they were in in two thousand nineteen and then what happened the following year. So in the snap color that bottom, that's this year's twelfth grade class and then obviously eleventh grade and so the kids that are seniors this year, the last time that they tested was in twenty-three's and you can see that, because they don't test in ninth grade, so, you know, looking back at the historical. They don't take it in ninth, eleventh and twelve. So that's our historical on that. The historical, yes. It is interesting, right? Because we cohorts, right? There are cohorts that are, um, I, and you can see that, so, uh, if you follow that through there, you know, some that historically scored very high and, and some that don't score as high. So there's, that helps us too in our programming, because we realize that we have those cohorts, so then you can focus in on what are we gonna do um, in order to help them to be successful and start to figure out which kids that are not, um, attaining at the level that we would want them to attain that, so. Hopefully I'm saying that correctly. See everybody get an understanding.
It's just a lot easier with this graph than once we've seen in the past.
We follow. Yeah, well, yeah. Where, where they're, yeah, good. Actually, Sue's, Sue was the one that sent this to us.
So, yeah, like, okay, the.
Uh-huh. Yeah, yeah, this is good. Good, thanks, awesome. Do you want me to do goal two before you have questions or?
Um, why don't we?
And Greg and Jordan is can hop into if they, if you want to ask any questions that are a little more drilled down.
So with the STAR results, those are instant, right? The teachers can see them instantly, you guys get those reports instantly. They're connected, right?
Yes, well, really, NDSA is pretty instant too, um, results, changes, but it's two. So it's A plus. But a lot of the stuff that we have now that leads us is is, you know, like with NDSA, there's some, right, so we, you know, you plan for the next year, you plan for the next cohort, you know, to try to learn from that data.
So then, um, moving from the A plus from the NDSA, do you guys, have you anticipated any different results? Um, that really align more with the STAR from the A plus or is that testing, like the base of that testing still the exact same as NDSA? It's just a different format.
Yeah, it's in a different format, that's, that's like the million dollar question.
Right, so, I mean, the base of it is our state standards.
Right.
Right, so it's still the same content, um, but delivered in a different platform. So, um, we haven't taken the time yet to like, look at last year's, we took three.
Right.
Three A plus tests and align that to, you know, where, where did those kids score on A plus versus on the STAR test, we haven't done that yet, um, but that is going to, yep, we, we need to do that and get that figured out as best we can. One of the things that we've talked extensively about is how, how much do we rely on STAR? Now that we have a interim assessment tool that aligns to the NDSA, which we've never had in the past. So, right now, we're still in that, that stage of finding out about what it looks like and what the data comes back as and, and there, you know, Jordan and I just did a meeting not that long ago with the Pearson Company that does the A plus testing. They're, they're updating how much information they're able to give us from the test and, and things like that too. So we'll get more information this year than we got last year, drill down a little bit deeper.
And the A plus is no longer in the pilot stage, it is now.
Uh, correct, correct, yep.
Uh, you know, one of the things that we saw input from the teachers, like they've been given all of this information prior to me presenting to you guys and sending out to the public, but you know, asking for their input and the ones that I received back, and one of them was test fatigue and we absolutely knew that that was going to be a thing, right? Because we were trying to muddle our way to figure out what is the best assessment, what are we gonna use for, but we're having those real conversations of like, okay, so if our kids are proficient readers, why are we, why do we just keep testing them over and over and over again? Because we know they're proficient readers, would that time be better spent doing something else? So we're starting to really have those conversations of maybe using STAR more as, you know, a progress monitoring piece for us, if we have the A plus to help us with the formative, but Greg knows the A plus and he knows the NDSA and he's dug in, he's got the blueprints, they're looking at the blueprints of the questions, like, they won't tell you the exact questions, but they'll tell you like sixty percent of the questions on the test are gonna be on this standard. So then the teachers get those in their hands and we're giving them time now in those late starts to start to work on that and to start to plan and say, you know, this is what I, I need to focus my instruction on. So we've got a lot of tools that we're using that will hopefully help us, plus that formative piece comes from the same company, right? So the A pluses line up with the, you know, the NDSA. You know, Renaissance says that they can only give you the data of what percentage, so it's like eighty percent reliability, but you still have that difference in questioning format and the rigor. So when Greg and I were in the classroom last year when we were monitoring in the A plus, and I know we said this before, that rigor piece is huge, because instead of asking them to compose a problem, they ask them to decompose it. So here's the answer, figure out how we got to that, that's a whole nother level of rigor and thinking, you know, because you're not just following the steps that we've taught you, so. Part of it, again, it goes back to our adult behaviors of understanding what is expected of the kids and then we're going through, we're preparing and we're prepping our teachers and we're making sure that we're delivering it so the kids can be successful on that.
So when we're given like a study guide of what's gonna be on the test, how long before the test the kids get it, or the teachers get it?
You mean the blueprint?
Yeah.
Oh, you mean to prepare for it, I'll agree, talk about that.
Yeah, so the states, I, I, I don't know when they actually released that. You know, but we do have it before, um, like, we don't have that yet for this year's NDSA, which will happen in the spring, but I'm guessing it'll come out at some point in time here in the fall. But we, we know what's gonna be on test, it's our state standards, right? We just don't know probably the percentage of questions that will come from this area of our state ELA standards, you know what I mean?
Yeah. How much time do we spend in a year on the test?
Yeah.
Yeah, so last year, we spent a lot of time testing, because we were, we, we made the decision to jump into that pilot, because we felt like it would prepare our kids for the NDSA that comes up this spring, because we wanna, we wanna do well, right? Um, so we jumped into that pilot, which was three tests, um, occurrences, and then, you know, in, in STAR, we do four test occurrences, so you know, that's, that's seven days right there in math and ELA, um, and then there's some science mixed in there too. Um, we don't do STAR science, but we do have the ability to do some, or last year, we had the ability to do some, um, science piloting too. So, I mean, yeah, we, we spend a, a good deal of time testing and, and, you know, the, the feedback from our teachers that said, hey, that, there's real test fatigue here, we knew that was going to happen, I remember at the very first meeting of, uh, staff meeting of the year, I told them we are going to test our kids a lot this year, and by the end of the year, it's gonna be noticeable, but the, this coming spring is when we hope to read the benefits of that.
So my question to that was is, while we're spending all this time testing, are we really learning?
In, in ELA, I think the results speak for themselves, we've met, we've essentially met our benchmark. Um, you know, I, I feel as far as K six goes, yes, we are, and, um.
And it's not like we're spending a whole week doing one test, you know, it's, uh, Renaissance takes us half an hour.
Thirty or forty minutes.
You know, but it's just that it's a number of occurrences, not, you know, time necessarily taking, taken from class, but, so yesterday, very interesting. So the standards versus the personalized learning, right? The message is, okay, well, we're focused just on the test and the standards and we gotta get them, but really that is not the way that it has to be, because we know what the standards are, but we can use those standards in order to drive our personalized learning, right? So then you, you might have these standards that need to be learned, but if I know one of those standards and you don't know it, I don't need to spend as much time on that, so then that's where that personalization, you're still learning the standards, it's just that we're not doing it the same old way of like, everybody's doing the same thing, we're all gonna get the same information at the same time, so those standards and the personalized learning are tied together, so that's part of what we were working on yesterday, was making sure that, that doesn't become a hurdle, because all there is is an excuse of like, well, am I supposed to teach the standards or am I supposed to do personalized learning? They go together, they work together, it's just that we have to figure out how to do that, we have to learn how to do that, right, so.
And now with the A plus and sixty percent, the questions are gonna be on the standard, but we're gonna have to find a happy medium. Not letting those other standards fall off, just so we can get those higher test scores.
Correct, I mean, we are, I'm by law to teach all the state standards, you know, and, and so there is, we, we have to find that balance.
Yeah.
That's correct. And that's where personalization really can come in, because if we feel like, okay, this small group of kids really struggles on this state standard and this state standard is going to be, you know, pretty relevant on that test, those kids probably need to spend a little bit more time than this group does, and they can explore other standards that are, you know, into deeper detail, so.
I have to interrupt, I have to leave the meeting.
Thanks, Rhonda. Good to see you.
See you, guys.
Any other questions on ELA?
Can we go back to having some teachers give demonstrations on what they're doing, maybe like the
Yeah.
tenth grade teacher that where you got the real struggle?
Yes, um, actually, we have that planned, so I think next month is, uh, goal one, we already have, we're gonna have the teachers coming in and talking about CKLA. Um, and for math, we're gonna have the high school teachers coming in to talk about what they're working on, so yeah, we're planning on having the teachers, teachers coming in. Okay, should we move on to goal two? Okay, so, um, unfortunately, so our, this is, this is a high structure, right? So, um, our late progress monitoring indicated that sixty-two percent was poor provision on NDSA, so we're like, ah, okay, our indicator's showing us that we're gonna do that. Uh, our attainment on the state assessment, which, uh, after, you know, going through and getting the final data was, um, only forty-six percent. So we missed our target by approximately nine percent, you know, so, uh, it was markedly lower. Uh, and our tenth grade scores are at a concerning level, so we only have to find out, so, Greg, we go to the math scores, of course.
Uh, or?
The NDSA ones.
DSA.
And historical, but let's do NDSA first. So, I mean, right away, when you look at that graph, right, so the red again is novice and to me, that, that is, that's concerning, because if you look at our historical, this cohort of kids, you know, their, their performance throughout the years, there's been some struggles, but, um, if you look at the percentage of kids that were novice, sixty-two percent of that, um, almost two-thirds of our kids were novice on that uh, state assessment, uh, this, this spring, so that, that's concerning, that's a red, that's a red flag, that's an alarm for us and, um, unfortunately, uh, we, we're not gonna have, that those kids won't be taking another assessment, so that's where they step off with this, that is that piece of it. So right away when we got this, like, uh, and losing sleep, because I wanna do things right, right? And I want our kids to do well and I wanna make sure that we're doing things the way that we, we want. And what can we do in order to change our behaviors? I think we need to be very aware of this, um, looking at our historical, you know, just, we need to be aware of it, we need to take steps moving forward. But, um, if I tend separate on this and then make this our focus, it's like looking at our rear, 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 rear view mirror, instead of looking forward. So we had conversations, the teachers are aware of this, Jordan's having individual meetings with those teachers, because we pulled the data out, we pulled out how the kids, um, scored on NDA in, uh, eighth grade, how the kids scored their grades in algebra, their grades in geometry, those have been all pulled out, their STAR scores. And Jordan is having conversations and with those teachers and we're talking about it. But we can't change what happened with the tenth grade, but we can learn from what happened with the tenth grade and we can figure out what we're gonna do a little bit differently. But we now need to focus on this year's tenth graders. So we are looking at the data for this year's tenth graders, pulled the same exact data out, so we've got their scores from eighth grade, we've got their scores in math and seventh grade, eighth grade, um, algebra, and then we also pulled out their, uh, STAR scores and that's our focus now, is to look and see, um, what indicators are there in order to show that the kids are not going to do well or perform well on the NDSA. Lots of different thoughts about math, right? Math instruction, uh, the order of how we do it, some schools do algebra one, geometry, algebra two, some do algebra one, algebra two, geometry, some throw in other maths in there. So there's a whole lot of things that we need to spend this year looking at. But we have the same resources as we have, we have got, um, the blueprints, we've got, um, the we've got our scores from Renaissance that we can look at, our testing from Renaissance, we're gonna have the A plus. So we're gonna have all of these things that we're gonna have aligned, um, in order to move forward and plan for it. So if you look at the green, those are our kids that are gonna be tested this year, right? So, um, historically, um, you can see that drop, right? So seventh grade, they, only forty-two percent of them were proficient, eighth grade, only thirty-nine percent of them were proficient. So that tells us, um, we've got some work that we need to do if we're going to break that trend. Those, is that, those scores are astonishing, aren't they? The difference be after COVID, how much they dropped?
Well, only in two grade levels. I mean, you look at the green, they only dropped three points.
Yeah.
And the same with the gray, then you look at the blue and the whatever color you wanna call that.
And that's huge. Yeah, that crossover also from elementary over to our high school, so that also is a, I mean, that's a red flag to us and we know that, right? So we're, we're looking at those things and trying to move forward, what are we gonna do?
Because, yeah, there's two, two things there, the COVID year and, and that's when they moved out.
So again, for our plans for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're, we're gonna conduct a deeper dive into our math. Um, I talked about that, you know, you comparing the scores, um, looking at grades, help us figure out where those disconnects at. Um, professional learning for educators, um, this summer, uh, our high school math team, they went to, um, training. We went last year to the science of math training, we're doing a lot of math-focused training for our teachers, um, in order to uh, you know, up our game. Uh, they've updated their priority standards to help define and direct our standards-focused instruction. Uh, we're gonna be administering the new NDSA this year, so we'll turn to that using our formative assessments and, um, so, you know, we're we're dedicated to doing better on this, because I don't, I don't like these scores and I don't think my principals like these scores and I know you don't like these scores and, um, we said we were gonna do this and we have our benchmark that we're gonna be working towards, so. Again, this is a discovery thing, try to figure out how do we move forward.
So we don't have a plan in place yet to, or a goal?
For next year?
Yeah.
Can we do sixty? We have our benchmarks.
But do we have a plan in place to get to there, to change this?
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean, uh, all those things, you know, looking at our data, that deeper dive, trying to figure out where those disconnects are, spending time, um, to make sure that we're prepared for that, so, I mean, we have.
Our, like Mrs. Self said, our two high school math teachers were heavily involved in extra training, our four, five, six teachers just spent two days, we got them subs. They're in this room for two full days on extra training. In October, all of our math teachers are going, our four, five, six, our junior high and our high school, one of our K two teachers are going to more training. Um, and we, we are we are giving as much as we can get extra training to them, um, and then we're using the late start time, we're dedicating that to diving into data, identifying groups of students that need help on certain standards and we, we have very concrete plans in place, um, to, to make a difference.
So what is our plan with this, uh, blue group, our eleventh graders this year? They're not testing anymore, how are we gonna know that they're great? Because at these scores, they're gonna fail whatever they do with life.
Well, and some of those kids that are in those, the blue group, they are not taking math classes anymore, they're done, they're done with their math for us, um. I guess our next testing will be on ACT, we'll see how they do on, on that, right? And we know what happened with our ACT scores last year, but we have one child that scored above a twenty-six, I think, so. You know, part of as our kids get older, you know, giving them more options and then you start to get away from, you know, they're pretty much done with that required coursework, besides, let's say they've got, um, they've got ELA that they have to do, you know, there's certain requirements, but as they get to be juniors and seniors, you start to move away from those requirements of ELA and math and science and then they get more options and more choices, so. You start to move away from those requirements of E L A and math and science and then they get more options and more choices, so.
Are we giving them too many choices then?
I don't know, you know.
We offer less choices than other schools our size, so. The Center for Distance Ed obviously allows us to. Allows our students to have a little bit more choice, but honestly, if you look at, at schools our size. Both staff wise and, um, student numbers, we offer less choices than.
I think choices that reduces the boredom of our students. Select some of the stuff.
This, the state requirement for math is that they have to have three credits of math to graduate. So, I mean, if you play that out, you, a lot, some, I shouldn't say a lot, some of our kids can get that done in two years. Depending on which classes they take. But most kids take their algebra one, geometry, algebra two, and then they're done.
And so of those sixty-one percent of the kids that scored novice on there, um. Obviously, we can't show you the kid data, some of those kids should never have scored novice. Cause if you look at their indicators and their history and how they do. Um, again, okay, does that go to, um, their motivation for it? You know, I think we still have kids that, it doesn't mean anything to them, those, these don't mean anything to them. Until it has that relevancy, like, right, so if I wanna go to college, I know, or I, I. That A C T is important on my path for college, so I'm probably gonna put more time and effort into that, but maybe not, you know, so there. There's. Such a, right now, we understand that there's so much more than just going to college, you know, there's careers, there's so forth and so on, so our kids know that piece, right? We're, we're struggling right now, um, to combat, I'm just gonna drop out of school, cause I can still get a job or. Help me this, because I'm gonna, you know, so we also are combating that and to try to find the relevance for our kids. Is going to be a huge challenge for Jordan and his teachers. But then again, that goes back to what are we gonna do in order to combat that, like, so when I ask the teachers for the problems. Our, part of our goal or what we're gonna be working on is finding solutions for them, okay, so the kids aren't motivated. Hey, then we're gonna have to figure out what our solution is, cause we've already tried some things, how do we up our game in order to make that, you know? To make that happen, so it's also looking at the whole child, not just at the math, but what are the other pieces that are contributing to that, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think a lot of students see the relevance of the algebra one and algebra two, but you look at, you use it. Some part of that you'll use someplace, a mechanic, um, I'm sure you use it, and you know. They don't, they don't see that, they don't.
You know, a big part of the N D S A is those geometry and now.
Yeah, you know, but they don't make that connection.
So what, what we can do is just identify those barrier, barriers, those problems, working with our staff and then. Figure out a way to work to overcome them and, you know, put then that back in the hands of the kids on, you know. Their performance on it too, so. I think we're so much further ahead, a step ahead of it, because in the past, we would not have been looking at this stuff and saying. We would have been by throwing a dart to try to figure out what's gonna happen, but we're not, I mean, we're spending time, we're dedicating time to look at this stuff. And just even that awareness, cause this isn't easy to listen to, right? Especially like from the teachers, right? Because, um, I'm, we're saying and we're showing and we're sharing that this is what these kids are scoring in here, so. This is hard to look at and it's hard for, you know. Yes.
Of course.
Absolutely.
Which, I mean, it should, if it's not, it's probably not. You know.
Exactly.
But working together to try to problem solve helps also, you know, to see, okay, this is data, now we're gonna take this data and we're gonna move forward instead of, like I said. I could sit here and focus on this, but I can't do anything about this now besides just learning from this and moving forward and focusing on. The kids for this year and what we're gonna do in order to help the kids to be successful, and I think we've got a lot of plans. Got a lot of stuff that we're looking at in order to be successful, because we want it, we want it to be better than this, so.
I know this is a broad question, but are there teachers that? Just point the fingers at kids?
No, I think all of our teachers are committed to solution based moving forward, like. You know, I, I don't think, like, when I said it's very personal for our teachers, like, they, they take that. It, it, in, inside and, and, and they're really focused, they're working very hard on finding solutions and, and. We know that it's not just our teachers' fault, we know that it's not just our learners' fault, we know that it's not just the. Uh, resources we're using's fault, like, it's, we have to find all of the flaws in all of those things. And find solutions and, and work to. Work to get better at all of them, so. You know, one of the things that, that we talked about in the four, five, six is we have two first year teachers in the math. Or, or two first year math teachers, like, and so we, we found out, hey, that's, that's an issue. Right, we went from myself and Jordan who had, um, you know, I have fifteen years experience in the classroom, Jordan was at six or seven when he. You know, I mean. That, that's a significant drop in experience in the classroom, right? So how do you increase experience in the classroom? You, first of all, you just be there, right? And then you give them more training, so that's what we're doing, um, and. So I, I, I really feel like we have solutions, but we just, we, we're gonna have to wait until. We get through all of this and find out if they worked.
Interesting, and that the teachers are really reflective, so actually those teachers down there, the first year teachers said. Part of the problem is I was a first year teacher, I'm trying to figure out this, 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 and this, to even be able to function during the day. And now I need to look at data, you know, so they, they realize it too, because they're feeling like, you know, I've got all these pieces, they don't come out of college ready to. You know, and they're throwing to our system, our system is a hard system to work in. It's a high demanding one, we demand these things, but we also demand that they're personalizing, you know, so it's, it's a hard system and, um.
Not just teaching out of the book all the time, I mean, that is not what we're doing, we're not just standing in front of the room talking. And, so I mean, those. We, we demand a lot from our teachers, but they, they work really hard and, and, uh. Hopefully we can get this turned around.
How does it affect when we bring in these long term subs? Have you seen any negative results? I mean, I'm not saying that we can't handle, but, oh, you know.
I mean, the, the stance about it, if you've got somebody that's out of their job for twelve weeks, you're talking three months, that they don't have. That highly qualified teacher that's got the relationships with them, that knows their classroom. It's, you know, a fact of life and what we have to deal with, but it does have an effect on the kids.
I mean, we are blessed to have the, the long terms subs that, that we have, we have been very blessed. But it's a real thing, um, you know, as far as in the elementary. I work with the classroom teachers to make sure that the classroom teachers are working with the long term subs. To make sure they understand what to do and how to do it and, and then honestly, we just. We just do the best we can with those people that are in there in those classrooms, um, but that is a very real thing.
Well, just because our classrooms are a different, you know, setting.
Greg said we're lucky that we have the subs that we have, cause they understand our system, you know, it's not just calling somebody in for the day, they understand our system, what they do and. And to have the same long term subs, just because of that piece.
Any other questions on those ones or two? Okay, can we move on to superintendent guardians additions?
I think I, I don't have to say, I'm gonna just chime that over. Well, here, I think you need to, um, accept, um.
Oh, we need to do that.
Yeah.
Um, can I get a motion to accept the, the summary of full reports for goal one, E L A, goal number two, Matt? Sire, moves, do I have a second? Second. We have seconds, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion passes with the absence. Okay, now we'll move on to superintendent guardians additions.
All right, so back in whatever months it was, it was tax season, so I don't really remember. Um, Brian and I were on the, um, ad hoc committee to revise the superintendent evaluation tool. And so in doing that, we had, um, recommended removing some of the sections from the, the, uh. Evaluation tool and adding a couple of guardrails instead. So, as discussed at the board retreat, we, we removed a couple of the sections, um, from the tool. That we felt were difficult to measure, section five on community relations and section six on finance. Uh, back in May, when the new evaluation tool was approved, we had recommended a guardrail for section six. And that was superintendent shall not operate without demonstrating financial stewardship. That demonstrates that district's student outcome goals are the first priority for resource allocation. And for section five, we are suggesting the following guardrail. And that is the superintendent shall not operate without ensuring all community relations efforts are transparent, inclusive. And aligned with the district's educational goals. Adopting these two additional guardrails will move us from the three original guardrails to the maximum of five. Brian will answer any questions.
I think Sue's guidance that, like, you, you won't approve these until I come up with the guardrails and then once the guardrails are, then you decide if you're gonna approve them or not, right? If I can come up with guardrail measures, so I think I have in my mind what I will do, probably won't be.
Okay, any questions on, uh, guardian additions? Okay, okay, we'll move on to item three, our consent agenda. We have a motion to improve our consent agendas presented. So, do I have a second?
Yes.
Are your seconds, Shannon, can you call the roll?
Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Patty Carlson. Uh, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day's absent, Monica Heimberg.
Yes, motion passes one zero with the absence. Uh, moving on to item four, our reports, those were all in the packet, information only. I don't think that we need to do any action on this. Um, move on to item four, items for discussion and possible action, we need to approve the final twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Do I have a motion to do so?
Solved.
May I move, start the second? Cross your seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion on the final twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget? Okay, hearing them, um, Shannon, can you call the roll again, please?
Yes. Brian Sayer.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day's absent, Patty Carlson.
Yes.
Monica Heimberg.
Yes, motion passes four zero with the absence. Um, item six, featured meetings, we have our regular meeting on Friday, October eighteenth at seven A M. Oh, they are, um, November fifteenth, meeting at seven A M. I believe we'll be doing a superintendent evaluation at the November meeting, if I try to put that on there, I will do that next. Um, so, hope to be doing that sometime in October, putting that out in the meeting. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight thirteen A M.